Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting of the DeKalb City Council, February 10, 2020. Prior to our roll call this evening, I would like to remind anyone who's in the audience who may like to speak to our one item on the agenda tonight, which is consideration of our revisions to our sign ordinance. To kindly fill out a speaker request form, give that to our city clerk Lynn Fizikas. She'll get it to me, and we will get you on. You can speak, obviously, under public participation on the item tonight, or on any item, for that matter, that may be on your mind. With that being said, if our clerk would call the roll. Lynn, please.
Morris.
Here.
Fanouken.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Samute.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Smith, that the agenda for the Committee of the Whole Meeting is approved. Any discussion? Roll call.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. We now move to public participation, and we do have one person in our audience tonight who would like to speak to the item on the agenda, and that's Dwayne Brown. Dwayne?
The main purpose of signs is to communicate, to convey information designed to assist the receiver with decision-making based on the information provided. Alternatively, promotional signage may be designed to persuade receivers of the merits of a given product or service. Irresponsible advertising may impact the social environment by contributing to overspending, personal debts, and strained human relationships, while it may also lead to the unsustainable utilization of natural resources. In the ruins of Pompeii, archaeologists found revealing signs on buildings. A dairy was marked by an engraving of a goat, a stone mason by tools, a wine merchant by two figures hauling an amphora jug presumably full of wine. Due to their intrusive quality, signs can arouse irritation as much as curiosity. The craziness in London for hanging signs resulted in accidents, such as one in 1718 on Bridge Street when four people were killed by a falling sign that pulled apart the facade of a building. This resulted in periods when signage was banned in England. Signs can be huge and attention-grabbing. Take the Las Vegas Strip and New York Times Square, for example. The Coppertone Sign in Miami featuring a little girl having her swimsuit tugged on by a dog was restored after losing part of its head during Hurricane Irma. Signs are important. The Supreme Court ruling that content-based restrictions are unconstitutional will have to be considered in any future decisions. Size restrictions for wall signs on buildings can't be different for stores and churches. The city can't deny stores movable LED signs while permitting banks to have them. We need to allow electronic changeable copy signs. The only locations that have them now are the Toyota of DeKalb, Little John School, Hillcrest Church, and Clinton Rosette School. We need to increase the allowable square feet and wall signage area. We lost Kentucky Fried Chicken and Long John Silvers because of this. I have a sign for the staff and the council. It reads, "Caution. Proceed with caution ahead." Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. I believe that you'll be pleased that some of the items that you brought forth will be discussed tonight, and I know that Bill Nicholas and Dan Olson will be with us tonight, and I'm going to let Bill Nicholas, our city manager, open our consideration, which is consideration of suggested revisions to Chapter 23 Unified Development Ordinance, Article 13 Signs. City manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to add.[322.12][322.12](Laughter). I think Dwayne hit it all. I do want to say that it was our intent tonight to offer you some extensive background so that as you're considering the topic tonight, you have a starting point. I know council's been very interested for some time, since before my tenure began, in taking a hard look at our sign ordinance. We have been working at that much more since the fall and through the early part of the winter, and I have to give credit to Dan Olson, who's done the lion's share of that. In your background tonight, you have both a red line and a green line version of Article 13. We've gutted it, in effect, to try, first of all, to conform to the Supreme Court's direction, but there are a lot of local things that are not, that are within our purview that need to be wrestled with, and that's what's before the council tonight. There are some highlights in the background that can guide your discussion, but I thought it was appropriate for Dan to run through those and then answer any particular questions you may have.
Thank you, Bill. Good evening. So, we do have some proposed amendments to the sign regulations. As Bill mentioned, been worked on for some time. Actually, the council did discuss this briefly back in March of last year about the content of the Supreme Court ruling, and that kind of initiated our proposed amendments. That Supreme Court case from 2015 pretty much said that content-based sign regulations were unconstitutional. There was a town in Arizona, Gilbert, that had provisions in their temporary sign regulations based on the content of the sign, depending on what it said. There were different sign restrictions, terms of how big it could be, how long it'd be displayed, et cetera. And then went to the Supreme Court. They ruled that unconstitutional, that your sign regulations must be content-neutral. So, taking with that, we also did the amendments based on just experiences administering the sign code in the last few years, what things come up when we're issuing permits, complaints out there, trying to address those. Also, we looked at a few other cities, too, in terms of their sign regulations, particularly ones that did some content-neutral amendments to their code. So, in general, the regulations are less restrictive. I don't think there was one regulation or one sign regulation that we made more restrictive. So, trying to be a little bit more business-friendly, promote economic development, at the same time, still having safety regulations in there for signs in terms of location, not be a visibility issue, and also keeping up the aesthetics of signs. With the U.S. Supreme Court decision, we still can do some things with the sign regulations based on the zoning district, restricting the size and height. We can restrict if the location, how many can be placed along a roadway. We can restrict the differences between signs that are lit up or ones that are not lit, signs that are on the site advertising what's on that property or advertising something off the site. We can distinguish between those two. Of course, still maintaining safety regulations for pedestrian and motorists, and distinguishing between residential property, commercial property, industrial property. So, I'll just summarize those, which in your summary of the changes, of course, the content neutrality, what we're doing there is basing the sign regulations. What you see on this slide is the different sign types, so the sign regulations are kind of based off these terms. And this is a graphic we'll probably include in the UDO. It's very helpful for people getting sign permits to find, you know, what is the difference between a projecting sign and a wall sign, and the different types of signage that we do have in the UDO. So, with the content neutrality, we're, for the most part, basing the sign regulations, and they currently do, for the most part, on the zoning district in which the sign is placed or located. So, there's different types of regulations between commercial and residential for signs. Also, the type of activity occurring on the property, instead of, we used to have real estate signs mentioned in there. So, we, content neutral, we just changed that to property for sale or lease, and then dictating what type of signs can be on there for that. Try to make it a little bit easier to understand, and it looks kind of busy with all the changes, the marked-up changes, but once we get a clean copy, it should be a little shorter, easy to understand. So, we took out some definitions or modified them, shortened them up. We also put a chart in there with the, for the permanent signs, the permanent wall signs, ground signs, to make it a little bit easier to reference when you're trying to find the So, one of the things we did change for the signs is the allowable wall signage. This is a graphic showing different sign areas, how they're measured, and different types of signs, but for the wall signs, we currently dictate that it's one times the frontage of your building, or frontage, or tenant frontage. So, if you have 20 feet of frontage in your building, you have 20 square foot wall signs. We're proposing to increase that to one and a half times the frontage, or in that case, at 20 feet, you get 30 feet. We do have a few, this will be good for businesses, particularly the ones in strip centers that are far from the roadway, gives them more wall signage. Actually, we do have a few planned developments on Sycamore Road that have this regulation in there for buildings that are further back from the roadway. So, we just want to make that standard for the whole city. Also, in the central business district, we currently allow two times the frontage, because some of those tenant frontages are kind of small in the downtown. We're going to keep the two times the frontage there. That seems to work just fine. We're also proposing to allow projecting signs. Projecting signs, get on the diagram, are signs that stick out from the wall, a little bit further than a typical wall sign. You see them downtown quite a bit. We've had a few inquiries, people asking businesses to have them in the general commercial-like commercial districts. We do have some strip centers, we do have walkways, and we'd like to see people see those as they're walking along. So, we're proposing to allow those in the general commercial-like commercial districts, which we currently don't allow. Also, a slight increase in the maximum size and number of signs for gas station canopy signs and drive-through canopies from 10 square feet to 12 square feet. Also, increasing the allowable number from two to three. This came up a little bit with the Casey's on East Lincoln Highway. They did get a waiver on their signage for the gas station canopies to have a little more square footage and one more sign. This will hopefully help out, too. Also, gas stations, of course, always have a lot of sign needs, so allowing them a little more signage on the canopy should help reduce the other signs that they'll desire. One of the other changes that we're proposing, which a few of these have come through the council in the last few years, are electronic changeable copy signs, is what we call them in the UDO, or digital displaced signs, electronic message signs also is a term used. They're currently prohibited in the city, and we've allowed those. You can get a waiver request with a special use permit, and we've granted for those in the last few years, since 2016, for Toyota of DeKalb, Little John Elementary School, Hillcrest Covenant Church, and then, most recently, last fall, the Clinton Rosette School, where we allowed special use, and these are images showing a couple of those signs. So, all those approvals are unanimous. What we're proposing is, since we're allowing these, they're becoming more common. These digital display signs are more popular with businesses. They're a little bit easier than the changeable copy. We got to put out the little plastic sign letters out there. It's, uh, looks a little better, too. So, we've approved, what we're going to request here is that we allow them as a permit, not go through a special use permit, which is 45, 60 days, just get a sign permit through our building department, allow those with certain restrictions. Now, we're not proposing these be allowed in the central business district or any residential district, but the commercial, industrial districts, or any residential district that has non-residential use, like a school. Those will be allowed. So, with these special use permits we've approved, we're, there was a minimum time period between message changes of 20 seconds. We've been consistent in the last four of that time change. We're proposing with this amendment that be reduced to five seconds. So, the sign industry standards, they usually indicate three to 10 seconds is most effective. I looked at a few other communities. They range from two seconds to 20, usually from two to 10. So, we're proposing five-second change between messages. Also, that the sign can take up no more than 50% of the sign area. And the ones we've approved, we probably would meet that requirement. As you can see, we don't want the whole digital display taking up the entire sign. There should be some other part of the sign there, too. So, no more than 40% or 50% or 40 square feet, whichever is less. Also, on these other special use permits, we approved a host of operational limitations with those, and kind of been consistent in each one, and we're proposing, take that language and put it in the UDO. And those involve no flashing lights, no animation, no swooping between messages. Lighting standards are in there, too. Can't advertise something that's not on the property. Commercial message, we are going to put in there or do have in there that you can advertise community events. So, that's proposed. Again, we feel that this is kind of a changing trend, and we get inquiries coming quite often about doing this, and proposing that to do with a permit with these certain restrictions. Another provision is, we looked at, of course, a lot related to the content neutrality, is temporary signs. These are banners, or just, these are images of some recent temporary signs we've approved in the past. So, currently, right now, temporary signs, either commercial, non-commercial, you need a permit for those to put them up. We break it down into three classifications right now: government agency, commercial, industrial, then we have a religious, community service, provider, theater art. So, that's content-based. We need to modify that regulations. What we're proposing is to make the non-commercial temporary signs with limitations on their size and how long they can be up without a permit. So, we're proposing that with no permit for these temporary, non-commercial signs, proposing that they be allowed to be put up 90 days per year. Right now, there can get six permits per year, 14 days at a time, so some of these entities have to come back to the building department routinely to get their new permit for another event they want to do. So, we thought with the, you know, reduced resources in terms of staff going out and checking all these signs, we thought we'd just make these, not with a permit, but still have restrictions in there. So, if we do have an issue, they have to be removed seven days after the event. So, if we do have an issue of temporary signs staying up forever, we can notify them and tell them to remove their signs. So, for the most part, I don't think we've had any issues with these non-commercial signs in the past doing that. Now, for commercial signs, temporary banners for commercials, entities, commercial properties still require permit for those, as proposed, and still, what we're asking for is the permit, they would be allowed up to 90 days per year, calendar year, for the sign to be up. Right now, it's 84 days. So, we're asking just for a slight number of increase in days. And this will allow the commercial entities, instead of coming back every two weeks, they can come in and say, well, we have all these events through the year. We want the one permit. We have the dates. They pay a minimal fee, and they can have them up. So, also, the slight clarification, I'll go back to the wall sign calculation. We just clarified the language for wall signs, what should be included in the sign area. So, for box signs, or signs that are placed right on a building, we include the square footage as the area in the red. For a wall sign, this example, Five Below, where the letters are actually put on the building individually, we include the area in the red but not the area in the blue. That's a background area, so we don't, for the most part, I think we've interpreted that in the past, but it really wasn't clear in the language. So, any type of background area or architectural support in a freestanding ground sign would not be included. So, we're just defining better what is included in the sign area. And the other image here, this shows the different wall sign, a box sign on the left, the wall sign with the letters on it in the middle, where you kind of measure around the extreme outer limits of the sign, and then awning sign, another type, shows, you don't measure the awning, then it's on, just the letters that advertise the business. Another change is the, currently, right now, there's no waiver through the sign regulations. You need to request a special use permit, or you can request it with a planned development. What we're asking is that regulations be changed, allow it for variance. You get a variance for a sign regulation. We have variance standards already in the UDO. We would need to amend those, too, to allow variances for signs based, vary the height, the size or setback. They would have to provide, go through a hearing process. That would be reviewed by the commission and decided by the commission. Planning and zoning commission, they'd have to prove a hardship or something unique about the property to vary that particular standard. So, we think it's just a little cleaner. Most other communities have variances for signs. They don't do them through special use permits. Finally, this is a slight change to window signage. Yeah, under the awning, you show the window here. So, this is the signs on the window, in front or back of the window. Right now, we have a maximum, kind of two different sizes, no more than 40% of the window can be taken up by signage. For neon signs, it's 25%. So, I thought, let's just make it one, standard at 50%, and then clear up what part of the window that is. So, it's entire window, not per window pane. It makes it a little bit easier to enforce the sign regulations. So, that is a summary of the regulations with your input and comments or questions. We'll take that back, make any necessary revisions. We'll set a public hearing in front of the planning and zoning commission, and they'll review that, make a recommendation, which will come back to the council for final action. The proposed amendments, we started to kind of route this around a different business community. We'll do that more once we get the final language that we're looking at and get the feedback from them, too. Also, our city attorney did review the language, proposed changes, and so they've had a review of it also, particularly the content-neutral components of it. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Dan. Alderman Fanouken.
Dan, and when it says you can exempt certain non-commercial temporary signs, and you list three categories, does that include, like, service clubs, like Rotary for Taste City Cal, Kiwanis for Bike, you went Beansy. Would that be included, or?
Exempt signs, temporary?
Yes.
Yes, those will be included.
Okay, because you use the term community service provider, and that?
Well, those are, that's the current regulations.
Right.
We're taking that out.
All right, so that, but because of the nature being non-commercial, they would be exempt on the temporary?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Alderman Favor.
So, did we consider, I think we have currently, you're not, I think we need to use a special permit to request a sign that's a shape other than, or, you know, shape of a tool, or so, instead of just a rectangle or a square.
Yeah.
We have that, it's not, it's not allowed, and I think you can, we can allow it.
We changed that in the downtown, I know, for Gorden's Hardware. We did a amendment.
Correct. That's the one I'm thinking of specifically, but I know the bike shop had wanted to have a sign with a bicycle.
There's no intent to tell people, particularly if you sell bicycles, you can't use a bicycle as your theme, or a wrench if you're a hardware store. I don't know where that grew from, but that's out of the new ordinance.
Thank you. I was going to say, just, you know, hearing you walk through these, you know, it does seem a lot, a lot more business-friendly, a lot more community-friendly in terms of a nonprofit or someone wanting to advertise or put up signs. They're not going to have to keep coming back to City Hall for permits. I think it's very, very business-friendly, community-friendly. I appreciate the work that you put into that.
Yeah. We still keep the size requirements, and when they're going to be down. So, if there's an issue, we can alert them to that, but for the most part, in the past, I don't think there's been any issues with doing that. And with the question, yeah, on the prohibited signs, we did modify the language. We had some restrictions regarding products that you couldn't put up, or caricatures and that. We took that out, so.
Okay.
So, Gorden's Hardware would still be allowed, others could still do that, something like that, too.
Thank you.
Alderman Verbic.
Yeah, I echo that. Nice progress so far with this. Few of the challenges in Ward Six have been things like having a commercial business with signage up that's not there anymore. So, I think largely, if we can get some information out to the community, that people will know what are the responsibilities of signage, for example. And then we'll see signs pop up in the public way from time to time for particular businesses that, again, it may or may not be just an information piece, that now that we're cleaning this up, we can get that message out to the community more broadly, and I think that things will run more smoothly. Now that we're coming back to look at this, as far as the fees and such, will that pay for our staff time? In other words, if we're making more of an effort to work on signs across the community, will that be able to be funded? Or how are we, how are we approaching that?
There's almost no function in city government right now that's funded entirely by the, by related fees. Used to be that we had somebody reading meters. That was a long time ago, and that person was paid for, because the money for the meters was enough just to cover that and, you know, meter repair. But there aren't many examples generally anymore where that's the case. But the good news is, if, and you pointed up a good thing, it's a code enforcement issue when you have signs to buildings that no longer, where the business no longer exists, or the, it's a motel and it's been out of business forever and it still says whatever. Those should come down. And poles can stay up, but the signage should come down because it's misrepresenting what's happening there. And if we do that and do it methodically, and with consideration, and reach out to whatever owners we can, sometimes a phone call's better than a nasty gram to start, and then we should have less code enforcement activity in that particular area, and we can devote more time toward other, I think, more pressing property maintenance issues, as you know, and apartment conditions and the like. So, that would be the benefit, as I would see, to free up time for those pressing matters.
Alderman Smith.
Dan, we just passed the ordinance for our buses and advertising. Apply, yes or no? Because we were restrictive on those, I believe, on the content, if I remember correctly. Is that, does this change it in any way?
Do we have something in here?
Did I read through it like five times?
For signs on vehicles, it only applies if you, like, strap a sign onto a vehicle intended to be seen as for advertising. For example, if you have a, I guess, a, a lot of businesses have their own vans or whatever, if it's painted on there and they're, you know, not intending to show it to the public, they're exempt. But if you're strapping it on, I don't think they would apply to that. It probably falls under the government signage or
Okay.
Public information.
Yeah, the, the sign code does not apply to our transit.
The one we just passed, okay, thanks, Matt.
Yeah, they're in the public way. It's, they're kind of exempt.
I just didn't, we're doing really good with this, and I just didn't want to see us step back.
But we do cover that for signs parked in a parking lot for a business. If they're, stick a Stein on top of the van or something, that's covered, but if it's just a regular commercial vehicle that they have painted up and they're parking it there, that's not intended to be for public views.
You talked about, well, Kay Jewelers, I've talked to them, they're concerned of, I think they've come to the city, I don't know how long ago, maybe you spoke to them. Does this help them with some of their signage?
What was their, I've not spoke to them.
You would ask me that.
Okay.
I don't know, but I could ask her again. It was something that, getting signs out in front on their own, that they were wanting on, especially on Sycamore Road.
Signs on the building, they may not, because they have frontage in the back of the building.
Correct. You know, you talk about some of those isolated little, the buildings in the middle. I think they're wanting to get their signage out on the frontage road. That was their concern.
Like a temporary sign, or?
Permanent.
Oh, permanent, okay.
So. Director, do you? How's that?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's a good start, yes.
Alderman Verbic.
One other question, a sandwich board, as referenced, too, in the materials. Do those need to be self-supporting? We've seen them leaning up against various posts and trees and things. I didn't see the language in there. Is that something that we should add, or, I guess, what's the definition of a sandwich board?
I think it's still got to operate as like a sandwich. It's still got to have.
We do allow those in the downtown. There's specific regulations allow them to be put out in front of the store, and they're not anchored down. They're allowed to kind of be just right in front of the store. You can't have it a couple blocks away or something, or several of them. So, I think we want to maintain that. That seems to be something that's been used and the businesses want, so. But we do allow that in the, towards the back of the code there in the CBD. Pretty much kept the current regulations on that, allowing that. much kept the current regulations on that, allowing that.
If we could, I'd like to add that they shouldn't be leaning against other objects, posts, trees, they should be self-supportive in nature.
Can you do that?
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah, Alderman Smith.
Dan, how about, does the airport have any restrictions along, as far as our, I mean, we're going with more display boards, are we worried about any interference with the airport? I believe they restrict those around. I know Tom's not here to answer the question.
For a certain height, or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not proposing to allow an increase in sign height.
Okay. I mean, as far as, like, the, the one that Clinton rose at forever, that might affect their.
Oh, the, the signs, signs that are digital display signs?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, there's a provision, a couple provisions here, that signs cannot interfere with any traffic, motorist traffic, and certainly not any airplanes, so.
I'd hope not.
Yeah, I don't, heard of an issue with that, so.
Okay, thanks.
Unless it's near the airport, but.
Very good job, I like your little chart, by the way. Made my life a whole lot easier.
Yeah, yeah.
Also, should just say, the FAA also prohibits anything like a beam that goes up, or a sharp, quick, pulsing light that might shine up, certain conditions, be distracting. We've got a restriction on the speed at which the copy can change.
Right.
Which is slower than a couple of other communities around us, so I think it's addressed.
No, I think you've done a very good job, I just, I think we'd all like to knock it out in one fair swoop, so.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, I think the very fact that you've taken a look at this, Dan, I'm very impressed with what you, with what you've come up with. I know, over the last couple of years, not so much recently, but I know this summer now, we're going to have the issue, the two issues that I've found most prevalent from businesses and residents. Number one, window signs that, in fact, take up the entire window space. And what I see here is that it can only be 50%.
Right.
Of that particular window pane, right? Not length of windows, but 50% of a window pane.
Yeah, we're changing that to 50% of the entire window, because a lot of, some windows have a lot of small panes, and.
Right.
You know, just, it got a little confusing. But we want to make sure there's some opening for security measures, and.
Precisely, yeah. And there are a few businesses in town that are, the windows are simply plastered.
Yeah.
With, with signs. And I think that, once we have discussion tonight, and once this goes to planning and zoning, and then it comes back, changes to our, to our ordinances, that we need to get to those folks who, number one, may have had a situation that now is a little bit less restrictive, and they should know that. And conversely, we should let those folks know, when it is clearly in violation, that, you know, we would hope that they would, would adhere to, to the ordinance. The other one, other than the window, is that temporary one. In the summer, you see these things that flutter back and forth, you know? Where are we with those? I know, we, we had a situation down on one business, a good, a good solid business, and the temporary sign was temporary only in the sense that it was something that could be removed. But the message itself was simply, you know, sweaters for sale, or something like that. And that sale item, or that particular item, a big part of this particular business's offerings, if you will, ran from April through September. Now we have, what, 90 days instead of 84?
Yeah, just a few more days, so.
Okay.
I mean, we, we don't, we prohibit inflatable signs, I don't know if it was a feather sign or inflatable sign you're referring to.
No, I wasn't, not the inflatable one, but.
Feather.
The one that just flutters back and forth. And it's, and it, most, a lot of them are just that exact same shape there, you know?
Yeah, so they would be, I mean, if they become torn, or fall over, or fall down, or start blocking visibility, we can go out there and tell them, you know, this is in disrepair and needs to be taken down. Temporary signs are temporary, not meant to be up all the time, so. We're keeping the amount of days are increasing a little bit, but it becomes an issue with, you know, that they're becoming eyesore or something, or if there's some, you know, tattered, a lot of times that happens, or they fall down, we can have them remove it, if needed.
Mayor, you mentioned something in your first category, I thought maybe I'd run it by the council, see what you think. My instinct is it's okay, but it's your instinct that counts. Couple times a year, we have high school students come in, and they paint a whole window.
Mm-hmm.
Go Barb's, whatever. It's a graphic, it's not a sign, although there may be a message on there, if it's a high school football weekend or something. I assume you have no problem with that?
No, I certainly would not have any problem with that, no.
The other one, though, is something a little more permanent, used to be, I don't know if we've done this recently, where in collaboration with NIU, they, and their athletic department, they want us to put a large, you know, in maybe, every, every store, not every store window, but every store, for a block or two downtown, picture of full, you know, six foot wide, 10 foot tall, football player, cheerleader, a student, or whatever, just, you know, around the time, oftentimes, of the fall, before class starts. So that's a graphic, it's not exactly a sign, that's not something we regulate, but are you okay with that? It's sort of spirit, and.
Yeah, I, you know, two words come to mind, yes. Common sense.
Yeah.
Just common sense.
Since they're the larger variety, I thought I'd run those by you. And that makes sense to me, that's exactly how I, I do it, and I wouldn't want to send a code enforcement officer. If you're talking about business-friendly, that wouldn't be business.
Common sense and business-friendly.
Alderman Fanoukakis.
Yeah, though, if, if I'm hearing Dan correct, or understanding Dan, that if you're, put one of those up, say they have two windows of that size, they cover, if one of them were only covering up 50% of the window space, is that how you're saying that?
Yes.
If it's a series of window on a single business?
If you did a window pane, some of the panes are very small, and if you cover a couple panes, but small part of the overall window, then.
Yeah, but let's say, let's say a business has two five-foot square windows, okay? And that they cover up one completely, and the other one's open, that still meets that 50%.
Correct.
Threshold. So I think, Bill, that answers your question about the.
Or they may cover up the whole, I think we can add some language that, again, this is kind of more, kind of more complaint-driven request, so we're not driving up and down every commercial property and looking for, into a sign violation, so. But I think we can address what Bill's bringing up regarding.
Alderman Verbic.
Temporary kind of.
Excuse me.
Coverage, you know?
Alderman Verbic.
And I guess, with your comments, any manager, Nicholas, that we can't recover our labors, so if there's any way to make this process automated, so an online submission request form, business wants to put out temporary sign instead of needing to call, or come down to City Hall, perhaps there's just a simplified form that could be online, that either the business, or nonprofit, anyone in the community could, could submit.
I, I like that, it's something to work toward. I don't know if we have the mechanics of all of that, mechanics is not the right word, electronics of all of that.
Right.
In place, but I, I like it a lot, and I like smaller permits like that, where you don't have to have a conversation to further explain. It makes a lot of sense, over time, that's what we're aiming for.
Great.
Alderman Perkins.
What do you see as distinguishing elements between a ground sign and a temporary sign? And the reason I pose that is the two can kind of tie together. You know, if you have someone who has a temporary sign that's intended to be temporary, but then, down the road, you know, it ends up out for a long, long time. Selling sweaters. Is it a permanent, permanent temporary sign, and is there, and are there distinguishing elements we could put in there?
We do define both of those, in the definition section, so temporary sign is defined, and it's pretty specific, banner, pennant, phalanx, you know, tinted cloth, light fabric, it is defined for a minimum time, and we do also define ground signs, where it dictates that it's more permanent materials, anchored into the ground, not attached to any building or structure. So we do define both, that it's clear what's temporary or permanent, and that's a big key in kind of, or between a temporary sign and a ground sign. We have definitions covering those two.
So where I'm really going is, is, is there's, you don't see a way for someone to make an argument that the temporary sign that was intended to be temporary, that down the road, you're saying, "Well, no, it's not a temporary sign, it's really a ground sign."
Or it's a permanent sign, they want.
Or it's a permanent sign.
Right, that's probably the two, yeah, permanent sign. Yeah, it's clear that temporary signs are defined, and they're restricted to time, and you can't call it a permanent ground sign. If it's a banner, and if it meets a definition of temporary sign, you can't call it something else.
But I just, I just didn't see where it's clear, you know what I'm saying, that, that distinction.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying, and I get, I believe I understand the intent of it.
I think we could add another layer there.
Yeah.
But I believe if someone wanted to argue that their temporary sign was a ground sign.
So a ground sign's going to have a footing, or if it's a post, it's a pole sign, but even that has to have a permanent footing, a frost footing, you know, a pier, something that's rooted below 42 inches. And these temporary signs, no matter what they'd say, they're not going to say, "I'm going to dig a hole, a post hole, and put concrete in there," and, they did, that would be an interesting challenge, then, to us. I don't know if, still, the materials probably wouldn't hold up as permanent materials, but.
We do define the permanent and temporary sign specifically, so we'll take a look at that again, make sure it's clear, that nobody can call a temporary sign a permanent sign. That's.
Thank you, Alderman Perkins. Alderman Morris?
I have two questions. So what space does this ordinance cover? Does it cover the entire city?
Yes.
Full city limits? And then, so, I'm sorry, I wasn't able to find it quickly in here, but is there a portion where it says, like, if you want to call it a temporary sign, how long do you have to take it out? Like, say I want to take it down tonight, so now, you know, it hasn't been up for 90 days, because I took it down overnight, you see what I'm saying? And then I put it back up tomorrow.
Yeah, with that change, 90 days per year, we're going to have to, with the non-commercial, we have to kind of, you know, go off of what they're, I think the only way we could kind of step in, if they've had it up for a certain amount of time, but if they, well, there's no permits for those, so for commercial, they're going to have to dictate the days they're going to be up. And if they, up for a week, and then take it down, they're going to have to communicate that with us, when they have it up and down, like they do now. So they stay within that time period. So they can put it up for a week, and then take it down for a week, and then put it up the following month, they're just going to, for commercials, temporary signs, communicate that with us, with the permit, which they have to do now, so.
Okay.
The temporary, commercial, we want to make sure they're not, we don't want those off-site, we don't want them up all the time, so. But for non-commercial, you know, we're just going to have to.
Go by complaint, okay.
Yeah, we're not going to file them when they take it down and put them up, it'd be hard to enforce that, certainly.
One more question. So if a, you know, portion of the community had a sign that was like a ground sign, per se, and then they tried, do we, do we have something in the ordinance that sort of protects from really messy-looking signs? Like, things that are, people are complaining about, and they're like, "Oh, my gosh, this looks horrible." Do we have to live with this sign?
For ground signs, we do, we prohibit, for permanent ground signs, we prohibit pole signs. We do have some older ones, but right now, we've had it in the ordinance for a while, that you got to have, can't have a pole sign at the base, you got to have some skirt around the sign, of materials that are somewhat similar to the building, we do have that in place.
So you couldn't have, like, a ground sign with a piece of, like, you know, two-by-six leaning up against it, and going, "Hey, look, it's all a ground sign," right? That would not be okay.
That probably fauna the sign permit, the building code for.
Yeah.
Signs, they got to be grounded, they got to be safe, and.
Okay.
Be a certain depth, these can't be stuck up against a fence or something.
It has to get past the permitting phase to, to be permitted, so, there'll be a chance for us to look at it. They can't say, "Look what I did, and it's legal, now I have to come in and get a permit, have a nice drawing, tell us what the materials are." And then for a nominal fee, we say, "Okay."
Is there consensus that what we have before us is much more tightened up than what we had? And, you know, this is alphabet soup, this is something that, you know, we are going to find, something we didn't talk about tonight, will come up, or something we will see this spring or summer. But I commend you, Dan, for putting this together, and what I suggest is that we have consensus that we ought to go ahead and move this forward to planning and zoning, and then come back to the council for final approval. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks for your input.
Thank you.
My compliments on the due diligence and benchmarking, it's pretty thorough.
Thanks.
Okay, that is the only item on our committee of the whole meeting, prior to our city council meeting, which starts at 6 o'clock. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting of the committee of the whole.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Faber, that we adjourn this meeting. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We are adjourned, city council starts promptly at 6 o'clock.